Good evening and welcome to Marion City Hall for the Marion Common Council Meeting. Tonight is Tuesday, June 17th, 2025. Welcome, everybody. And we're going to go ahead and call this meeting to order and begin with our prayer by Councilman David Kane.
Please join with me in prayer, please. Dear heavenly Father, we thank you for your so many blessings that you've bestowed upon this city and county. We ask that those continue. We ask that you be at this meeting with us, help us be discerning in our decisions, and be with us throughout the evening. Amen.
Thank you. And the pledge by Vice President Gary Fordice.
Thanks, five. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you. And Madam Deputy Clerk will call.
Kane?
Here.
Marshall?
Here.
Fordice?
Here.
Brunner?
Here.
Klein?
Here.
Devine?
Here.
Witten?
Calgill?
Here.
McKinley?
Here. All right, we're going to go tonight's community spotlight, and we're spotlighting the General Francis Marion Chapter of the Daughters of the American Revolution. And we have some of the members here tonight. I think I see them over there. Come on up. All of you can come on up to the front here. You can stand on either side of me here. Well, welcome, all of you ladies, and we appreciate you coming tonight. So good to see you. You look fantastic. I like the DAR on there. It's a lot of nice swag and bling, and it's very shiny up here. This is great. Oh, my goodness. Yeah. If you were in the military, you'd be like a four-star general with all of that gold. Well, thank you for coming tonight. Tonight, we wanted to highlight again the General Francis Marion Chapter of the Daughters of the American Revolution, which is a very big mouthful to say, generally sometimes called the General Francis Marion Chapter of DAR, if you've heard it either way. And so the General Francis Marion Chapter of the National Society of the Daughters of the American Revolution celebrated their 115th anniversary on February 22nd, and the National Society was founded on October 11th, 1890, and was incorporated in 1896 by an act of U.S. Congress. The mission is to promote historic preservation, education, and patriotism. The motto is God, Home, and Country. And the local members participate in the Stand Down for Veterans every October and participate in activities at the VA Hospital and the National Cemetery. And when school begins in August, they will be presenting books and flags to every fourth-grade student in Grant County in celebration of America's 250th anniversary. They promote Constitution Week and recognize businesses that proudly and correctly display the flag of the United States. The Indiana DAR held a competition at the request of the Indiana Senate to get the current Indiana State Flag design. And in May of this year, at the DAR State Conference, it was officially announced that another contest held by the Indiana DAR for a salute to the Indiana Flag has been accepted. And of course, so Ruth Ann Sumter, raise your hand, Ruth Ann, so everybody knows who Ruth Ann is. She will be completing six years, is it the Regent? Of the General Francis Marion Chapter on June 28th, so six years. Thank you for six years. And Katie Adams will take over as well. Very good. And so we would like Ruth Ann to...
She's a past president.
Well, hold on a second. I'm going to say Ruth Ann's going to share some words. I'm going to hand the mic over to you so everyone can hear everything you have to say. So here you go. Go ahead and share whatever you'd like.
Well, Margot is obviously our most decorated member. She's been a member longer than the rest of us put together, I think. And she's a past Regent also. I couldn't get along without her advice. What I wanted to say is any woman over the age of 18 who can prove her lineage back to the Revolutionary War, whether they were in battle or whether a woman was taking care of the wounded or making rolling bandages or cooking or whatever. So it doesn't matter what their role was in the Revolutionary War, just if you can prove it. And we have, there are no restrictions otherwise, other than proving your lineage. And there are a lot of people who love to do that research. I'm not one. Yes. And Renee is in the Indiana Room at the Marion Public Library. She loves to do this research. If you aren't qualified or interested, Renee would lead you, help you, get you to the other people in DAR. There are people at state and national levels who would be willing to help you do your research. So something to look into and think about. Thank you.
Would you like to hear the Indiana pledge? Sure, yeah.
Because I don't know how it's going to be promoted, obviously not very well. I'll just share with you, okay?
Okay.
Oh, blue and gold with torch of old, enlighten our path with hope. Hoosiers, we look up to thee and pledge our all to liberty. Short and sweet. Short and sweet, so.
Very short and sweet. Yeah, that's great. Thank you so much. Yeah, and I will add too, yeah. I will add too. So I didn't realize, so the library has a resource for genealogy. You guys helped with that? Wow, okay. Oh, yes.
It's not restricted just to Grant County or Indiana.
Okay, there you go. Another reason to go down to the Marion City Library. I will say, though, if you're watching, you don't have access to a library, ancestry.com is a great tool. I used that a long time ago and found lineage back to 1024 in my family, so.
Do you qualify for?
I think I believe so, yeah. You can find out.
A SAR for Sons of the American Revolution. There's also a CAR, Children of the American Revolution.
Yeah. A lot of that's in censuses and the ancestry.com. You can pull a lot of that data. It's amazing what's out there. I'm sure you guys are very familiar with that.
Your Marion Public Library has ancestry for you, for free.
For free. There you go. If you don't have access, though, there you go. If you're living in the woods somewhere.
And Renee can testify to this, that she works in it.
Yeah.
But yet, when she turned in her application, Nashville went through her application with a fine-toothed tongue.
Yeah.
And found a little snag that took her...
You got to figure it out.
Took her a while to get it worked out.
Well, I greatly appreciate your dedication to this organization and just continuing the history. You know, we have a lot of things to be proud of in our country. We're not a perfect country. We try to pursue to be a more perfect union, of course. But the American Revolution obviously was a very important part of our history, and we appreciate you continuing that history. And just the General Francis Marion, you know, people are like, where did the Marion come from? The city of Marion.
Swamp Fox.
There you go, yeah. That's how you know. So he was a big deal. So that's why there's Marion County, the city. There's a Marion in about every state. And we happen to be the only Marion in Indiana, which is great. So we appreciate you all coming here.
Which means we are the only General Francis Marion Chapter in DAR.
That's phenomenal, yeah. All right, something the mayor's here, you can maybe add that one to, when you go out and recruit businesses, add that one to, like, we're the only one. So would you ladies like to say anything else? Anyone else want to share anything? Okay.
I've proven five that fought in Revolutionary War.
Oh, five.
Five veterans.
Okay. That's fantastic, yeah. That's so cool. Isn't that neat to know that your family served and fought? And, you know, we wouldn't probably be here if it wasn't for your family and many of our family that served.
We know that we have four Revolutionary War veterans buried in Grant County.
Yeah, awesome.
And President Harrison's wife was the first President General of the National Society of Daughters of the American Revolution.
Yeah.
That's one thing the East Coast can't take away from us.
There we go, yeah. We greatly appreciate it in here. Any of the council members want to share anything? Go ahead.
I just think it's a nice touch that we're recognizing this group on the 250th anniversary of the Battle of Bunker Hill.
I would say, I would venture to say there's probably more knowledge of history in this room than AI could ever provide. I'm just saying. Artificial intelligence cannot replace all the knowledge and experience that you all bring, so we appreciate all of it. So thank you for coming tonight. We'd love to get a photo with you, if you guys wouldn't mind. Yes, our pleasure, yeah. And council members, if you want to come and get a picture. Okay, moving on to the city employee spotlight. The one and only Danny Robinson, who's about attended every council meeting since I've been here. Danny, you got to come all the way up. You don't get to sit in the back the whole time. So I'll talk as Danny comes up. So I've gotten to know Danny probably better than most city employees because we interact with technology on the council, obviously. Camera systems, microphones, we all have city laptops and cell phones. And Danny's always been on my list, at least mine list, and I'm sure all the rest of the council's list. But I don't know what took so long to get to you, Danny, other than you were always in my heart day one. But anyway, so Danny, from day one, any of us, whenever we got elected, you get to know Danny pretty quick because he's got to issue your phone and your laptop. And, you know, you want to talk about an immediate, good feeling about serving the city. You know, you meet Danny Robinson, right? He's just got a smile on his face, super kind and understanding and patient, willing to bend over backwards and help you do whatever and set up whatever. You call him and he answers and, you know, hey, fix this, or my caller ID says someone else's name, and let me get right on that, and he fixes it. And that's just, I'm sure all of us council members can speak to that, but the rest of the city can speak to that as well. Just you can ask anybody in City Hall or any city employee. Danny is, you know, unmatched in his dedication and his attitude. Every time you interact with him, I can get ahold of him. You know, he's really been integral in helping us get the camera system set up in here in the council room. You know, we did have an outside company, but Danny really actually did quite a bit of the work and helped them with it, helped run lines, helped test equipment. You know, he checks the equipment in the back for us, and even at the council meeting I was not at, what, a month ago? Danny's the one that actually ran the meeting on YouTube, so he kind of runs backup for me on YouTube. Or if I just fall off face to earth, at least somebody else knows how to run YouTube meetings for now, so. And you know what? And he does it without complaining and without ever making you feel like you've asked for too much. And so, you know, I've only been on the council a year and a half, but if you talk to anyone, Danny's been around, I think, since 2005? About 20 years, oh my.
A little over 20 years.
Yeah, a little over 20. Who's counting? I mean, he's close enough, right? And, you know, and I will say too, I was formerly in IT, but, you know, 20 years is a lot of technology changes to keep up with. I know what technology was in 2005, and it's nothing like it is today. And so just for him to be able to keep up with the technology and provide excellent resources to the whole city. I think he also assists with, you know, police department and fire department and, you know, cameras in the parks and anything that essentially plugs into the wall. Pretty much Danny has his name on it somehow, some way. It's connected to an internet. Anything that's connected to the internet, it's got Danny's name all over it. So very integral in helping us get the TVs picked out. If you go into any of the conference rooms with those new vibe boards that the mayor picked out, great job, mayor. Danny's the one that set those up, you know, with the assistance of the rest of the team here, maintenance crew and all of that. But I just can't say enough about Danny. You know, as the council president, I get kind of deep involved in technology, and I can always rely on Danny to help out, and he's very dependable, and he's... He's been a constant. When I was trying to figure out the microphones, I think we've got the microphones fixed finally. But you know what? I can say, as long as we've been dealing with any issues, he just keeps trying, he keeps fixing things. And, you know, when it comes to IT, it's a process of elimination. But Danny, we just really appreciate you. You're definitely valued by the entire city and every staff member in this city. So, you want to say anything?
Just that I can't believe I'm here 20 years later. I love working for the city of Marion. I love the people I work with, the people I've met. I love working in IT, the ever-changing environment, and it's just been a pleasure, and I hope to get a few more years in.
Yes, we hope we do. Any council members want to share anything? Okay, go ahead.
I'll just echo what you said. Danny is, from the first time I got in here and started on the council and working, he is, he is just a pleasure to work with. And, man, any, he's worked with me a lot because I'm not very computer literate. So he spends some time with me anyway, but I appreciate everything you do, Danny.
And I can only imagine, so when Mayor Morel took office, just as a former IT manager, you might have been like a kid in Candyland for a while because you're a mayor that embraces technology and...
And he keeps you, he keeps...
Keeps you moving, yeah, yeah. We got to keep moving full speed ahead, and, you know, just the change in the conference rooms with the technology and, you know, just having... I appreciate you, Mayor, for supporting the advances in technology for our city. You know, not only are our buildings kind of getting up to date, but our technology is getting up to date. Danny's probably been ready and was willing to play with the new toys, so to speak, as we say in IT. So appreciate you so much, Danny. And, yeah, I mean, one meeting, I could probably talk for 30 minutes or more about you, so we'll stop right there. But we really, really appreciate you, and we'd love to get a photo with you. Come on up. I think I'll say, I'll say a side note. I think for the first six months I had my city cellphone, I didn't realize it, but every time I'd call out, it was somebody else's name that previously had this number. So I'd call people and they'd think I was somebody totally different. So I had to get ahold of Danny and he went and changed it. So now people know who I am when I'm calling. So anyways, appreciate you, Danny. Appreciate the General Francis Marion Chapter of DAR for coming in as well. You guys are obviously welcome to stick around. So we're going to move into the consent agenda for the approval of minutes for the regular meeting, June 3rd, 2025. Consideration of pre-approved claims and consideration of claims. Any discussion on any of that? If not, I'd entertain a motion.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion that we pass the consent agenda in its entirety.
Second.
A motion by Councilman Calgill. I heard a motion or a second by Councilman Brunner. Any other discussion? Madam Deputy Clerk will call.
Kane?
Aye.
Marshall?
Aye.
Fordice?
Aye.
Brunner?
Aye.
Klein?
Yes.
Devine?
Yes.
Witten?
Yes.
Calgill?
Aye.
McKinley?
Yes. Moving on to committee reports. Do we have any committee reports or liaison reports? Yeah, Councilman Klein.
While she's looking for hers, I will endeavor to be quick. Board of Airport Commissioners met June 5th. The mayor joined at the start of the meeting, discussed some stuff that'll be on the agenda for the next meeting. So I'll just do a drive-by on that. I'll let the mayor elaborate if he wants to. Topics were, in general, the shortfall in the funding of the airport's fuel farm project, as well as potential means for funding possible water and sewer coverage for the airport. They discussed a plan for clearing trees near the approach for runway 22, and this is kind of cool. New class of cadets just started at the aviation academy. Two students received Aircraft Owners and Pilot Association scholarships. This is impressive because they only give out 80 nationwide, and two of them went to our folks. And that says something about it, and that's about it. They paid bills and did other assorted stuff.
We appreciate that. Thank you. Councilwoman Devine.
The Marion Utilities Board has canceled the last couple of meetings, but I think due to summer, but I think the next one's coming up next week, so I should have a report on that. The Board of Works met yesterday, and they went over a variety of things that are actually coming before us fairly quickly. One was they held the public hearing for the BOT project, which is the fire station, and I know we're talking about that tonight and the financing piece of it. There was a presentation about the ESG contract selection that was advertised for at the beginning of the year. And the Board of Works had some questions and asked for full packets, and we'll review that and discuss it again at another meeting. There was a purchase agreement made for a property at Nebraska for one of the pieces that the city has owned for quite a while, and he purchased it for the appraisal amount. They reviewed the bids for the Salt Barn, which had a $65,000 project, and awarded it to AccuSteel. That came in below budget at $59,000, so that was a good thing. And then reviewed an administrative leave within the fire department, and that was pretty much their meeting, so.
Excellent, thank you. Did you also want to discuss the ALI Committee?
So President McKinley had asked for an update on the ALI ordinance that he had presented. And I know we had one meeting and had asked for some additional updates of information or changes that would be suggested. I had not gotten many, so I didn't, figured we'd call another meeting and I'll get with everybody on that committee. And we'll just review it one more time and decide whether we're going to give a favorable or not a favorable recommendation to bring it forward. And then that way we can figure out where we're going with that ordinance, if that works for those on the committee. Which I think is what Gary and Mike, is that right? The Public Works Committee? Not that one? Eric and Mike, okay. So I'll get with you guys after the meeting to get that scheduled, so.
Great, sounds good. Thank you so much. Any other committee reports? Councilman Brunner.
Last time we were here, we were just getting the splash house going, and it's now a full house out there. So we're going to hear some more about what's going on out there a little bit later in the meeting, but I just wanted to say that if you've not been out there or your family's not been out there, you need to check it out. So very happy with the splash house.
Thank you, Councilman Brunner. Any other committee reports? I'll say it's kind of related as a committee report through the redevelopment commission, but if you haven't noticed, the dirt has been moved, or I'll say asphalt's been moved down at the River Rocks project. So it's exciting to see some action down there by the river and excited to see that project come to completion and see how that area is going to transform. So super exciting. Go down and check it out, and it'll be the last time you'll see that vacant lot, hopefully forever. Any other committee reports? All right, and we're going to move into unfinished business, beginning with additional appropriation 6-2025 Cumulative Capital Development Fund, second reading in public hearing.
An appropriation appropriating certain funds in the amount of $33,695.34 for the CCD Fund. The city of Marion Engineering Department is requesting the unused appropriation balances from 2024 be allowed to be transferred into the 2025 appropriation accounts. These transferred appropriations will be used for paying for services that were carried over from 2024 that were not encumbered and to all four additional projects to be funded by these appropriation carryovers. Speaking, Engineering and Planning Director, Mike Craft.
Welcome.
Good evening. As was presented to you in the first reading, you have four, you have MVH, CCD, wheel tax, and local road and street coming before you this evening, all with obviously different amounts. They were, they're going to be money that was, as Councilman Fordice has said, they're non-reverting funds. So we didn't use those funds to complete community crossing. If anybody's been down to race in boots, we about got the sidewalks done, but the paving still needs to be done. So these monies will be paid out accordingly when that work is done. So I will entertain any questions, and you can take each one of them as you would, as you would like.
Great, thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Any council members with questions before we go to public hearing? All right, thank you, Mike. Appreciate it. All right, at this time, we'll open up to public hearing. If you would like to speak for or against this, please make way to the microphone. Okay, I don't see anyone making a move. Last chance. All right, we're going to close the public hearing and move on. Any other comments, questions from council members? If not, I would entertain a motion.
Mr. President, I move that we suspend the rules on additional appropriation number 6, 2025.
Second.
Motion to suspend the rules by Councilman Kane, a second by Councilman Calgill. Any discussion? Any discussion? Madam Deputy Clerk, roll call.
Kane.
Aye.
Marshall.
Aye.
Fordice.
Aye.
Brunner.
Aye.
Klein.
Yes.
Devine.
Yes.
Witten.
Yes.
Calgill.
Aye.
McKinley.
Yes. Rules have been suspended. I would entertain another motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we pass additional appropriation number 6, 2025.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Kane to pass, the second by Councilman Calgill. Any other discussion? Madam Deputy Clerk, roll call.
Kane.
Aye.
Marshall.
Aye.
Fordice.
Aye.
Brunner.
Aye.
Klein.
Yes.
Devine.
Yes.
Witten.
Yes.
Calgill.
Aye.
McKinley.
Yes. Additional appropriation 6-2025 has passed and we're going to move into additional appropriation 7-2025 MVH Road Repair, second reading and public hearing, kind of like we did for the first reading. This and the next couple, essentially, they're going to be appropriating $405,835.84 for MVH Road Repair. It's essentially the same thing we're doing on all of these. It's just they all have their own unique account number that things have to be transferred from and different types of repairs. But essentially, this is work that has been completed now.
Almost.
Almost, but we have to get the money to pay that we approved last year. But because of the way the rules are, you have to re-approve to pay that the following year. So this isn't additional expenditure. This is money we've already appropriated last year. But we just have to say, yep, go ahead and spend it for what we said you could spend it on last year. So first, just sparing all the additional same words. Essentially, it's the same account numbers. If you can read it, you're going to see it's pretty much a duplication. So with that being said, I don't need much from you, Mike. I'm just going to, saving you some words. Same type of additional appropriation and we're going to go and open up for public hearing again. All right. I don't see anyone coming up. Go ahead and close the public hearing for additional appropriation 7-2025. Any other comments by council members? If not, I'd entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair, or Mr. President, I move that we suspend the rules on additional appropriation number 7, 2025.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Kane, the second by Councilman Brunner. Any other discussion? Madam Deputy Clerk, roll call.
Kane.
Aye.
Marshall.
Aye.
Fordice.
Aye.
Brunner.
Aye.
Klein.
Yes.
Devine.
Yes.
Witten.
Yes.
Calgill.
Aye.
McKinley.
Yes. Rules have been suspended. I'd entertain another motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move that, or Mr. President, I keep calling you Chairman. So one of the same maybe. Mr. President, I move that we pass additional appropriation number 7, 2025.
Second.
I got a motion by Councilman Kane. I heard a motion or a second by Councilman Klein. Any other discussion? Madam Deputy Clerk, roll call.
Kane.
Aye.
Marshall.
Aye.
Fordice.
Aye.
Brunner.
Aye.
Klein.
Yes.
Devine.
Yes.
Witten.
Yes.
Calgill.
Aye.
McKinley.
Yes. Additional appropriation 7-2025 has passed. Moving on to additional appropriation 8-2025, Local Road and Streets, second reading, public hearing. Again, copy and paste with the exception in this certain fund, the local and streets, it's $315,422.39. Same thing, same account numbers, copy and paste, same information. Any other, any questions, comments by council members? All right. We'll open for the public hearing. I gather if you didn't speak on the others, you may not want to speak on these. So, but we have to do it. We have to follow the process. I'm not seeing anyone make their way to the microphone, so we'll close the public hearing. Any other comments, questions by council members? Not, I'd entertain a motion.
Mr. President, I move that we suspend the rules on additional appropriation number 8, 2025.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Kane to suspend the rules, second by Councilman Calgill. Any discussion? Madam Deputy Clerk, roll call.
Kane.
Aye.
Marshall.
Aye.
Fordice.
Aye.
Brunner.
Aye.
Klein.
Yes.
Devine.
Yes.
Witten.
Yes.
Calgill.
Aye.
McKinley.
Yes. Rules have been suspended. Entertain another motion.
Mr. President, I move that we pass additional appropriation number 8, 2025.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Kane to pass additional appropriation 8, 2025, second by Councilman Calgill. Any discussion? Madam Deputy Clerk, roll call.
Kane.
Aye.
Marshall.
Aye.
Fordice.
Aye.
Brunner.
Aye.
Klein.
Yes.
Devine.
Yes.
Witten.
Yes.
Calgill.
Aye.
McKinley.
Yes. Additional appropriation 8, 2025 has passed. Moving on to the last of the series, additional appropriation 9-2025 Wheel Tax, second reading and public hearing. Copy and paste, same information, except this dollar amount for this particular fund is $564,738 for the wheel tax. And again, same account numbers, everything's the exact same. It's a carryover from 2024. Any council members, comments, discussion? Not, I'd entertain a motion. Oh, my bad. Yeah. I got moving along. Thank you so much. I even have it circled right here, public hearing. All right. We're going to move into the public hearing. Not seeing anyone make their way to the microphone on this one either. We'll go and close the public hearing and at this time, I would entertain a motion.
Mr. President, I move that we suspend the rules on additional appropriation number 9, 2025.
Second.
Motion to suspend the rules by Councilman Kane, the second by Councilman Calgill. Any other discussion? Madam Deputy Clerk, roll call.
Kane.
Aye.
Marshall.
Aye.
Fordice.
Aye.
Brunner.
Aye.
Klein.
Yes.
Devine.
Yes.
Witten.
Yes.
Calgill.
Aye.
McKinley.
Yes. Rules have been suspended. I would entertain another motion.
Mr. President, I move that we pass additional appropriation number 9, 2025.
Second.
Motion to pass by Councilman Kane, the second by Councilman Calgill. Any other discussion? Madam Deputy Clerk, roll call.
Kane.
Aye.
Marshall.
Aye.
Fordice.
Aye.
Brunner.
Aye.
Klein.
Yes.
Devine.
Yes.
Witten.
Yes.
Calgill.
Aye.
McKinley.
Yes. Additional appropriation 9-2025 has passed.
Thank you for your time. Have a good evening.
Thank you. Okay. Moving on to General Ordinance 12-2025 Recertifying Council Election Districts, second reading and public hearing. Microphone.
An ordinance recertifying the council election districts. The city is required to either redistrict or recertify its districts every 10 years based on the census. The districts were evaluated and it was determined that the population deviation is 11.6%. While there is no set number in state code, the rule of thumb is around 10%. Based on this, it was determined to move forward with recertification rather than redistricting. Speaking, Council President Nick McKinley.
All right. Thank you. If you weren't here the first time, basically, I'm going to read the numbers again just for transparency and for the record. And District 1, they have 4,361 people. District 2, 4,891. District 3, 4,659. District 4, 4,763. District 5, 4,727. And District 6, 4,909. To identify the population deviation, you must first take the total population divided by the number of districts. That number will give you target population of each district. That number is, if you divide them all, add them and divide it by 6, 4,718.33. Then you take the most populous and subtract the least populous. That number is 548. Then you take that remainder, the 548, and divide it by the target population. That gives you your population deviation, which is 11.6%. The, there is no set number by state code. However, state, or the, currently, we have to have this passed by the end of this month or we face lawsuits and fines. The rule of thumb, though, is around 10% or better. And so we're right around that rule of thumb. And so it's close enough to not warrant any changes at this time. I know last meeting we did discuss, and I greatly appreciate when we get to this again, if any of us are on that council still, that maybe we have a little more time to really deep dive and try to get that deviation down some. So I would love to do that. Fortunately, I didn't find out about this until, it was just too late to really spend a lot of time digging in on that. So that's where we're at. Just want everyone to understand at home or in here to understand where we came up with that and why these numbers sound like they do. With that being said, any comments, questions by council members before we go to public hearing? All right. Go ahead and open it to the public hearing. If you'd like to speak on this, make your way to the microphone. All right. Not seeing anyone make their way up to the microphone at this time, so I'll go ahead and close the public hearing. And I would entertain a motion.
Mr. President, I would move that we suspend the rules on General Ordinance Number 12, 2025.
Second.
Motion to suspend the rules by Councilman Kane, the second by Councilman Brunner. Any discussion? Madam Deputy Clerk, roll call.
Kane.
Aye.
Marshall.
Aye.
Fordice.
Aye.
Brunner.
Aye.
Klein.
Yes.
Devine.
Yes.
Witten.
Yes.
Calgill.
Aye.
McKinley.
Yes. Rules have been suspended. I would entertain another motion.
Mr. President, I move that we pass General Ordinance Number 12, 2025.
Second.
Motion to pass by Councilman Kane, the second by Councilman Brunner. Any more discussion? Madam Deputy Clerk, roll call.
Kane.
Aye.
Marshall.
Aye.
Fordice.
Aye.
Brunner.
Aye.
Klein.
Yes.
Devine.
Yes.
Witten.
Yes.
Calgill.
Aye.
McKinley.
Yes. General Ordinance 12-2025 has passed. Thank you all. And moving into 2025 CF-1 forms, review of CF-1 forms.
The yearly review of the residential and commercial CF-1 forms. The Marion City Council is required to review CF-1 forms on an annual basis and either approve or deny them. The CF-1 forms are submitted by entities or persons that are receiving a tax abatement to ensure compliance in order to continue receiving the tax abatement for another year. Speaking, Council President Nick McKinley.
Thank you, Madam Deputy Clerk. So we do have one more. And I apologize, this actually was received by the deadline, just didn't quite make the cut for that last packet. And I will, I will take ownership of that. That is my error. But McClure's did Smithers on time and they do a fantastic job of completing theirs and, and filling them out properly. So those were dispersed in the agenda packet to all the council members. So essentially, that's the only one. We still have another one that's outstanding. I've reached out to J.G. Bowers. I've not heard back. I've left voicemail and haven't heard anything yet. So that one's still on hold until we can figure out what more to do with that. But as of today, the only one we're looking at is the McClure Store Number 15. And that location's the one, 815 North Baldwin Avenue. So any discussion, questions by the council members?
This went through Chuck Bankard and the Growth Council before it got to us or before it got to the meeting, to your knowledge?
I did send it to him.
I mean, it looks good.
I. I did send it to him and I do believe, I've had a lot of discussions with him recently and I do believe this, he did say this one was fine. So, and to be honest with you, so this looks just about identical to the one last year as well. Nothing's really changed. And so there's no deviation from last year.
Yeah. I mean, it looks fine. I was just curious.
Yeah. And I actually, speaking of Chuck as well, he also is going to, he's trying to help contact and find out about the J.G. Bowers one to follow up on that as well. So, but yes, this one went through with no issues. Any other questions, discussions? Okay. I would entertain a motion.
Mr. President, I'll move we approve CF-1 form for McClure Oil Store Number 15.
Second.
A motion by Councilman Klein, second by Councilman Calgill. Any other discussion? Madam Deputy Clerk, roll call.
Kane.
Abstain.
Marshall.
Aye.
Fordice.
Aye.
Brunner.
Aye.
Klein.
Yes.
Devine.
Yes.
Witten.
Yes.
Calgill.
Aye.
McKinley.
Yes. The CF-1 for McClure's has passed and been approved. Moving on to Grant County Visitors Bureau, it's kind of an announcement, but it's still, it's old business because we had on new business. So, so far, an update, we've gotten, received two resumes for the Marion Common Council Appointment for the Grant County Visitors Bureau. You can still submit your resumes to the city clerk's office or email it to me. Deadline is June 24th at noon. Must be submitted by then. And those resumes will be and have already been dispersed to the rest of the council for review. And then the July 1st council meeting, council will take up those resumes and take a vote You can drop them off at the city clerk's office at City Hall during the week, eight to four, or you can email them to councilpresident@cityofmarion.in.gov. All right, and moving into new business, Resolution 9-2025, a request to approve the resolution for the downtown fire station.
A resolution of the Common Council of the City of Marion, Indiana approving the issuance of bonds for the City of Marion Redevelopment Commission and related matters. The City of Marion, Grant County, Indiana previously issued certain requests for proposals and qualifications to build, operate, and transfer the downtown fire station. BW Development LLC submitted a proposal and statement for qualifications to the city for completing the services, and the city determined BW Development was reasonably susceptible of being selected for a build, operate, and transfer agreement in accordance with Indiana Code 523. Pursuant to the Act, the city negotiated with BW Development for the best and final offer to complete the services. Thereafter, in accordance with the Act, the city published notice of its intent to hold a public hearing and recommended BW Development for a BOT agreement. The City of Marion Board of Public Works and Safety, operating as the Board, as I, as defined by the Act, conducted a duly noticed public hearing on June 16th, 2025, and approved BW Development for a BOT agreement. The City of Marion Redevelopment Commission contemplates the issuance of the bonds in one or more series in an aggregated principal amount not to exceed $6,740,000 to complete the project. Speaking, Chris Grisel, Barnes &amp; Thornburg.
Welcome, Chris. Thank you for making it tonight. Glad you made it.
Yeah, thank you. Good evening, President McKinley, members of the council. For the record, Chris Grisel, Barnes &amp; Thornburg. Good to be with you here tonight. I want to talk about kind of three steps to this project here before you. First, the process and how we got to where we're at here tonight. Second, the BOT agreement and the GMP that was awarded yesterday at the Board of Public Works meeting after the public hearing, and then the financing piece, which is really what we're here before you tonight. So if you recall in the fall, the city issued a request for proposals for the redevelopment of the fire station pursuant to a build, operate, transfer agreement. And in October of '24, the city, through its Board of Public Works and Safety, entered into a scoping agreement with BW Development. They thought that BW Development was reasonably susceptible of being awarded the project, and they entered into an agreement at that time, which allowed BW Development and its team members to formulate certain design services necessary for it to formulate a GMP, a guaranteed maximum price, under the build, operate, transfer agreement, which would be provided to the city. That agreement was amended in the spring, in April, so that the development team could do some more design services. And about a week and a half ago, BW Development made its GMP presentation to the city at the authorized amount of $5,496,000, ninety-six, let me start over, $5,496,057. That GMP proposal, as Ayesha mentioned, was then presented to the Board of Public Works and Safety through the build, operate, transfer agreement after a public hearing, and the Board of Public Works and Safety awarded BW Development with the project and approved the BOT agreement. So tonight, assuming that the council approves moving forward with the project, we have an authorizing resolution before you with respect to the financing. Later this month, we'll be in front of the Redevelopment Commission for its issuance of the bonds. We hope that the bonds are being publicly sold, and we'll talk about that here a little bit further through the presentation, and S&amp;P is rating those bonds. And so those bonds are looking to be sold sometime towards the end of July. We hope to have proceeds available in early August so that we can start construction process in August. And I'll mention to you, I'm going to talk about a lot of these topics, but there's a lot of folks here in the room that are capable, more capable than myself, to answer these questions. You have members of the development team that are sitting right here next to Mayor Morrell. You also have Greg Balsano with Baker Tilly, the city's municipal advisor with respect to the financing. Although our focus tonight is on the financing, I'm going to highlight a few points of the BOT agreement, the GMP for you, because I believe this is the city's first build, operate, transfer agreement, and so I just wanted to get you kind of accustomed to some of the points within the project. So as I mentioned, the developer has produced a guaranteed maximum price proposal to deliver the project for $5,496,057. So in general, without any other change orders, that would be approved by the city, that's a guaranteed maximum price to deliver the project on. Any dollar over that amount is borne by the developer and that cost and that risk is on the developer. There are a few buckets within the GMP proposal, and I believe that line item budget was included within the BOT packet, but a few that I just want to draw your attention to. There are allowances within the construction budget. Those are for items that haven't been really fully scoped out yet. One of the examples that are in there is like FFNE, the furniture, the equipment that is contained within the fire station. You'll see an allotted amount that corresponds with that, with that bucket. The city doesn't really know yet exactly what they're going to be procuring with respect to that equipment. They're still working on that. That budget is an allocated amount. If it's not utilized, it'll reduce the project cost by that amount. So it's there, it's identified with an acknowledgement that they're going to continue to work through that process. But any line item in general in that budget, which comes in below that line item, is a savings to the project, with the exception of contingencies. And contingencies, you'll notice there are design contingencies and construction contingencies that are within the GMP budget itself, and I think total about $230,000. One of the common incentives that we put in a BOT agreement to help tie the developer to the project and the commitment of the guaranteed maximum price is to offer up a 50/50 savings for any dollar that's saved within that contingency bucket. So in other words, under a guaranteed maximum price proposal, any dollar that's spent over that GMP amount, after those contingencies are exhausted, is borne by the developer. And so it's a further incentive to try to get the project delivered to you on time, on budget, and hopefully under the guaranteed maximum price that's proposed before you here today. I can tell you since a week and a half ago, when the development team made its original presentation to the city, now we've already continued to collaborate on, on further ways to reduce certain budgeted line items that are within that guaranteed maximum proposal. So as you're looking at it, it certainly is a guaranteed maximum price, but it's a ceiling and we're hoping to deliver the project, you know, at or below that cost. With respect to financing the project, the Redevelopment Commission is proposing to issue one or more series of bonds payable from Ad Valorem property taxes to be levied on the taxable property within the redevelopment district. However, the RDC reasonably anticipates using available funds, legally available funds to it, like TIF, to, to make these bond payments, and has projected those within all of our TIF estimates, to the extent, you know, we've shared those TIF estimates with you, the, the fire budget has been projected within those, within those revenue projections. As I mentioned before, these bonds are being rated by S&amp;P. We were on about a two-hour call with S&amp;P today, Baker Tilly, myself, and a team from the city walking through the ratings process. And, and one of the ways that we're looking at securing the rating for the city is to fully fund what's known as a debt reserve fund. And a debt reserve fund is a, is a payment for the bond, it's the final payment for the bond, and right now it's estimated at about $600,000. But it's a way to strengthen your credit in front of S&amp;P. So in other words, if we weren't to use that mechanism to strengthen your credit before S&amp;P, your rating presumably would be lower and your interest would go way up on your bond payments. So again, it's a mechanism, although it's a cost of financing, that overall, we hope, will help reduce your financing costs long-term for the project. At the end of the day, with respect to the financing, these proceeds can only be used on the fire station project. So we're here before you tonight with an authorized amount that you'll notice is well above the GMP amount for the fire station project. As I mentioned, we've got about $600,000 right now estimated into our debt reserve fund and fully, fully paying that to help your credit rating. We have rating costs that we have to pay with S&amp;P, and additionally, we have traditional closing costs. Right now, we're estimating about six and a half, a little over six and a half million dollars, but those price points can go up as we continue to work through the rating process, and S&amp;P needs to have the comfort to understand that not only this body, but the Redevelopment Commission here later this month is going to fully approve an authorized amount without further amendment, so that we can get that approved and then go through the closing process and work to, to continue to refine our cost points at that point. So at that point in time, I'll open it up for any questions, and I know Greg with Baker Tilly and the development team for BW will be happy to answer any as well.
All right, thank you so much, Chris. Appreciate that very thorough explanation. Any council members, questions, discussion? Councilman Brunner?
If everything goes well, what would be the expected date of having a fire station in downtown Marion?
That's a great question. I know, I, I believe construction starts in August, and I think we have a substantial completion date of August of 2026. Is that correct?
So we're about a year away.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
I do have a question on the design, real quick. Maybe the mayor can answer it. I probably could have asked this offline, but it, it struck me today. I've seen some renderings of the fire station one, looks great. Can you tell me, is it going to be a flat roof on that building?
Yeah.
Okay. I just asked because, you know, just the flat roofs create issues, and I see out Station Six, we're converting that from a flat to a gable roof. And so just wondering, you know, I have a flat roof on my building and I hate it, and it causes issues and leaks, so just thinking long-term, I don't know what the purpose of a flat roof or over a gable roof would be, but I just know, I don't know, just a preference thing. Just curious, I saw the rendering and couldn't tell if it was a flat roof or not, but just some little input and thought, wow, Station Six is converting to a gable roof, is Station One going to have a gable roof? So just a quick comment. Any other council members?
I have a question, more of a statement. That, you know, we, we've needed this station down there for a long time, for almost 10 years now, and it's nice to finally see this get going. And I just, Chris, you've been great to work with, and Mayor Morrell, I want to give you all the credit too for this, for understanding how important this is, and I remember us walking door to door, talking about this, and it's, it's something that the citizens deserve the maximum protection, and this is going to do it. And like I said, this, this has been almost a 10-year project for me, and I'm just, I thank you guys and your whole team, every, I look forward to look, working with you guys, and it's going to be great.
I will add that I've had, you know, some members of the community ask, why do we need another, another fire station? This isn't necessarily, why do we need another fire station, it's why do we need one downtown? I just mentioned earlier about moving ground for the River Rocks. There is, there is a vision, the mayor has a vision of just bringing our downtown back and revitalizing, and, you know, the addition of the next level trails coming through there, the splash pad, all of that, possible Ballard Field, that stuff's all in that close proximity, let alone any other potential future investment that could come downtown. If we build it, they will come. And so, you know, providing this resource downtown, I believe, gives better protection against people's assets. When they build these very expensive buildings, they want to make sure that there are resources available to protect those buildings. Insurance, insurance companies like that as well, but, you know, really, it's, it's more than just fire too. I'd say it's rescue, and, you know, being in, I've been in many accidents in my life where police and fire have shown up. I've been on the other side where I was, the police that showed up. And proximity is everything, timing is everything, and if, and, you know, if you're in desire need, that proximity helps a lot. And I also say, I'm not a fireman, never been one, but I know enough that how quickly fires spread and duplicate, and it exponentially grows, and having all this investment downtown or seeking investment downtown, I, I think having this station back downtown is good, let alone just an extra added bonus, it's just a little bit of a pride. You know, this is, it's not for pride. I think it just feels good to go, look, we have a station one downtown again, and it's opening back up. But when it comes to taxpayer dollars, you know, like I said, Chris said, you know, funded through TIF, and so this is really money that's intended to be reinvested. TIF money is intended to be reinvested, and so this TIF money is being reinvested in our public safety. That's all I have to say. Any other council members? Councilman Brunner?
Quick question for the mayor. Can you come to the microphone, mayor? I had someone ask me within the last week, what is the expected time of arrival of the Jones Project and also the other beautiful new facility that will be going in across the river from, from the YMCA?
Yeah, so, well, good evening, this is my first time talking tonight. Good evening. So regarding both projects, if you drive downtown now, you'll see River Rocks is, is going, and I believe that build time is about 12 to 16 months. So the, what you see, the work they're doing right now is kind of the pad work, and I think that's going to take all the way up until September-ish, and then they'll expect it to go vertical around October. And as far as Jones, if you drive past there, you'll see that they already start working on the, on gutting the interior of Jones, and we have a few more documents to finalize, and they'll be before you all here in the next month or so, with those documents, and that should be ready to roll here in the next year and a half as well.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilman Brunner. Any other council members, comments, questions, opinions? Okay, I would entertain a motion.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion that we pass Resolution 9-2025.
Second. Motion to pass by Councilman Calgill, a second by Councilman Kane. Any other discussion? Madam Deputy Clerk, roll call.
Kane.
Aye.
Marshall.
Aye.
Fordice.
Aye.
Brunner.
Aye.
Klein.
Yes.
Devine.
Yes.
Witten.
Yes.
Calgill.
Aye.
McKinley.
Yes. Resolution 9-2025 has passed. Thank you so much, Chris.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Be safe on the way home. And moving into General Ordinance 13-2025, amending salary ordinance 11-2025.
An ordinance fixing the maximum salary of appointed officers and employees and an annual payment of flex dollars, $250 to non-contractual full-time employees of the City of Marion, Indiana for the year 2025, adding two part-time park security positions. This is to inform you about a joint initiative between Marion Parks Department and the Police Department to improve the safety and security of our city parks and their visitors. As part of this commitment, the Parks Department is in the process of hiring two part-time security personnel who will provide coverage for our parks at least 42 hours a week, seven days a week. Further details regarding this initiative will be presented by Rose Cadena of the Parks Department and Police Chief David Gilbert.
Good evening.
Welcome.
So we're asking for two part-time positions. As you all know, we have lots of vandalism in the park. We've put over a million dollars in our park just in the last year and a half, and we just rebuilt bathrooms very next day. All the soap dispensers were knocked off the wall, hand dispense, the paper dispensers. We have a million-dollar playground out there, and it's continuously getting vandalized. So not only would the security positions be monitoring all 13 parks, but they would also be there to lock up our facilities from now on at the close of the park at 11 o'clock, so some, hopefully curb some of that vandalism. You're not going to catch it all still, but they would also serve us as stocking those restrooms, checking on all 13 parks. Safety reasons, vandalism reasons, I know that we're going to do some training through the Police Department so that we're just not sending just anyone out there to kind of curb these things that are happening, but, yeah, I think it's needed and it's time.
Thank you. And just for clarity, this is 42-hour weeks combined between the two part-time positions?
Yes.
Not per?
Mm-hmm, they would not work more than 29 hours a week.
Okay. I just have a question, like as far as training, where is that training going to come from? Is that from the Police Department?
We would, we would train these employees not to be police officers, reserve officers, anything like that. We, they would be a prevention mechanism, another set of eyes focused on, on this mission and not a general one, which is the key. We would, we would, if I had to sum it up, I'd say we teach them to be a set of eyes. We'd provide them a radio to call, they see something unusual, not to approach anyone, certainly anyone who seems to be dangerous, not to arrest anyone, not any, not enforcement action of any kind, but to be a set of eyes and ears and a deterrent and a prevention mechanism. That's what we'd look to do. We, we'd talk to them about protocols, radio protocol, safety, watching, if someone's doing something, keep an eye on them, dialing our officers in if that were necessary and those kinds of things. So we would be a part of the training component, but the program would operate under the parks' umbrella.
Chief, with that training in, I like what I hear so far, but ears at the newspaper. Sometimes watching until, and sometimes you got to jump in and intervene. Will they have any kind of training on if there's something going on, bodily harm and assault?
Yeah.
Where watching and just phoning it in?
Yeah, well, the, I'd like to think those times would be pretty rare and extreme. We, I, I suppose I'd give the same advice to them or the same training to them I'd give to any city employee that would, might run into something that was an extreme situation. But that has to be juxtaposed with their safety, their own safety. So we, we just don't feel like we can invest in any kind of a quasi-police officer, make them police officers, so we just have to strike that. We have to find that intersection between their safety, good business, and, and those extreme situations that do sometimes occur, but.
Okay, had to ask.
We, we'd have an ear to that. It's so subjective, I don't know how to answer your question without going into some scenarios, but I feel like we could address that and have a pretty good chance of having success and keep our people safe.
I don't feel like, I don't feel like we've had a lot of calls for extreme measures in our park. I've been here.
Yeah, it wouldn't be different than the street department guys going around the city when they see something, you know, what, what are they going to do? Firefighters, firefighters actually more, they're, they're involved in quasi-conflict some of the time, people, mental health issues and things like that, and yet we still were able to find a way for our people to be safe first and then still provide services. So I think we could do it, but it's a good question.
I have another question. So transportation, so obviously there's more in one park. What mode of transportation are they going to be using?
Sure, I believe the Police Department has a vehicle, an older vehicle.
We would take care of that.
And who would they directly be reporting to? Parks, police?
Parks.
Parks, okay. But some quasi-supervision by police for security-type training?
And who would they directly be reporting to? Parks, police?
Parks.
Parks, okay. But some quasi-supervision by police for security-type training, I assume?
The way I see that is more the administrative management scheduling, where the line item resides, organize, those kinds of things on the park side. On the tactical side or the implementation side, the actual on-the-road, what it looks like there, certainly when it deals with a security component or seeing something out of order or amiss, that's where we would be involved. So we would have training where our staff officers, all of our officers, would know who these people are, what their mission is, how it integrates with ours. When they hear the signal on the radio, that person's code, that unit number, that's who they are, here's where I need to go, do that. So on the implementation side or the actual on-the-road activity, we would have a larger hand in that, but running the operation would be up to the Parks Department. That's how I see it. Yeah?
Excellent. Thank you. And just for knowledge, I know that the restrooms, as you say, in Motto Park, you know, who unlocks them and locks them up at night, or would this position kind of have the keys, so to speak, to be able to lock and unlock those when needed?
Sure. Our staff unlock them in the morning. They're up there till 3:00 PM. So this would be something that they would lock up only.
Okay. Great. Thank you. Any other council members?
Chief, I have a question. The transportation vehicle you're talking about, I'd like to do this job. Can I drive the SWAT vehicle, though? That's what I want to do.
Yes.
Thank you, Dave. All right.
Yes, you can.
Go ahead.
Serious question.
Go ahead.
Would they be uniformed or in some way identified as being unofficial for our parks?
Yeah, sure. We're going to provide probably a t-shirt polo that would say Park Security on there. We would also have, I believe we're going to do like a magnet on the side of the card that would be just say Park Security.
That wasn't a serious question?
Yeah, I, that's a good question.
Net clothing is included in the appropriation that we're asking for.
Yeah, that was my next question is, you know, I trust that Chief Gilbert knows what he's doing. He's going to make this person look legit, but, you know, we just envision, okay, they're going to be really identifiable, right? So if we say have our July 4th, July 3rd fireworks, you know, somebody walking through, you're going to, right away, that's our park's security and be able to catch them real easy, whether they're wearing a hat or really stand out. The other question I would have is, I know they're not going, they're going to be trained not to be offensive, but are they going to be trained defensively, defensive tactics? Are they going to have any kind of defensive weapons?
We, well, we haven't, as far as weapons go, I hadn't envisioned that, but I'd go back to, my mind is open, and I, what I'd go back to is what I said before, their safety is they deserve to be safe, whoever it may be. So we feel like we need to consider that, a non-lethal type, my mind is open, we'd consider that. But I, I'm reluctant to make the leap from what you said, a defensive posture to an assertive posture. I think that's not something we really want to do, and if we do that, we'd want to make sure the training was sound and that it was focused on what this tool is for, for your safety, not to attack, but to defend. But it's a bit of a moving target, no pun intended, but we, my mind is open to consider what would make these people safer and yet still stay within the mission. We're not trying to train quasi-police officers. We don't want to do that. Yeah?
Yeah, I fully agree, and I appreciate that. All right. Any other council members? Oh, Councilman Brunner.
Question, is this going to be, once we, if we do okay this, is, will this be year-round or will, would they all be months? Either the Police Chief or the Park Department can answer this question for me.
I mean, as far as I know, it's going to be year-round. We have programs and events and things that go year-round, so vandalism just doesn't happen in the summer, so that's what I would like to see.
Thank you.
All right. Any other council members? Vice President Fordice.
I'd just like to say thank you. Well done, Mayor, Chief, and Rose. This is long, long, long needed.
I agree.
I appreciate it. Thank you.
I have one more question.
Yeah, go ahead.
It's not, this is getting in the weeds, and it's not, not talking now, but it disappoints me greatly when I hear about the vandalism that has occurred in our park time and time again. And I'm curious, have we never looked into having some kind of surveillance system, even if it were trail cams for areas where those things are prone to happen? Because if you had, if you'd had a trail cam up, assuming the day that that happened, we would have some evidence as to who is doing it.
We're currently installing more cameras in our parks. We're currently getting some quotes to put cameras in each one of our parks. Once again, that comes at a cost.
Oh, yeah.
It's not something that's been budgeted or anything else, but
Put a camera here, and they'll tear up something over there.
Yes, but we are currently addressing some of those.
I think it's definitely something we should be thinking about.
We put in that new playground at Shelter Two area. Danny's currently installing cameras as we speak, so.
That's all.
Thank you. Other council members? All right. I would entertain a motion.
Mr. President, I'd make a motion to pass General Ordinance 13-2025 to second reading public hearing.
Second.
All right. I've got a motion to pass General Ordinance 13-2025 by Vice President Fordice. We'll take a second from Councilman Witten. Any discussion? Madam Deputy Clerk, roll call.
Kane?
Aye.
Marshall?
Aye.
Fordice?
Aye.
Brunner?
Aye.
Klein?
Yes.
Devine?
Yes.
Witten?
Yes.
Calgill?
Aye.
McKinley?
Yes.
General Ordinance 13-2025 has passed to second reading public hearing, and that brings us just to the last two announcements that I have listed on here, the next two citywide cleanups. District Three is next. That is this weekend on Saturday. Same things apply, same rules. If you're in District Three, put your items at your curb. I will, if you're listening, or you can tell your neighbors, not the alleyway, at your curb, because some of these trucks just can't get in the alley. So put all your items at the curb. There are some exempt, they cannot pick up, tires, TVs, appliances, I don't know what else I'm missing, but those are the main ones. So that's District Three. Of course, the rest of the city can drop it off at Citywide Maintenance there behind the old Armory Building from 9:00 AM to 2:00 PM. And I will remind you, if you're in District Three, you put things at the curb. If they're not picked up Saturday, no worries, they'll probably come back Monday, because depending on how much junk's put out there, it may take them more than one day. So if you still have items out there on Monday, don't worry, but by the end of the week, if they're still there, definitely call the city. But we're just excited to have this. And then our next one will be District Four. That one is in July. That's listed on there as well. So any other council members with announcements?
One quick, Mr. President. On Fridays, there's usually a food truck downtown Marion. This coming Friday, Lawson Moore's will have their food truck in front of Ashley's Courtyard. You can attend that anywhere from, I think, 11:00 AM to 2:00 PM is when the food truck's going to be there. You can take your lunch then into the Ashley's Courtyard. They've opened that up. There'll be live entertainment there also. This Friday is Keith Ray. This is being sponsored by Historic Marion and SOS of Marion. So we would love to have the public support, come down and grab some great food, go into the courtyard. That's a great area to spend some time, hear some good music. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Kane. Any other council members with announcements? If not, I'd entertain a motion to adjourn.
I move that we adjourn.
Motion by Councilman Kane, second by Councilman Klein. Any discussion? Madam Deputy Clerk, roll call.
Kane?
Aye.
Marshall?
Aye.
Fordice?
Aye.
Brunner?
Aye.
Klein?
Yes.
Devine?
Yes.
Witten?
Yes.
Calgill?
Aye.
McKinley?
Yes. Meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everybody, for coming.